I don't want to go. I'll have to call. Oh, yeah. You can just show me the dragon and I'll be doing it.
Uh.
For a family here.
Did you hear that word?
Yeah.
What is that? What is that?
Well, they moved. So.
No, I was saving.
I'm scratching. What do you go to the manager?
I said, I'm here last month.
Triple in size. All right. I'm able to work today.
Show me this.
Five minutes or something. But I don't, uh, don't think. I think we. But a lot of things. I just. I just. I just.
So. So. I'm here. I announced that her. We're going to run the link. Well, I mean, I've heard about the car here on the year. What happens in there in school out there? Do you realize how good it is in the back? Or me, you know, like you. I don't know what's happening. I'm here about you. He has a spare back sore case because of the back. I'm going to sit down. And that's for.
We're gonna have enough for four.
Oh, yeah. David's here.
Oh, okay.
Phil's gonna be late.
Okay.
Paul's out and Phil's gonna be late.
Okay. Is Paul Philin any better?
Do we know?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Yep. Phil's gonna be late and Paul is out.
I figured out the time. It's Phil in there.
Nope. We got another.
Thirty seconds.
Got another portion of a minute. All right, everyone, just let me know when you're ready. Will.
It shows a lot. I just don't see it.
Exactly.
You wanna just double check it real quick?
Well, I'm looking at it and I'm looking at the big picture. It shows a lot.
It would be live on Facebook right now?
It should.
Theoretically.
I hope.
Couldn't get any sound last night.
Right. See, I practiced today with it and we, I don't know what happened there, but we didn't have sound. And then I accidentally deleted something over there.
Uh-oh.
I had to redo it and I don't know if I don't have a. It's showing me that it's.
It's live with sound. Devin says live with sound.
Okay.
It is. Okay, cool.
Y'all can see it. I just can't see the small period. I'll have to call somebody more than help me find the rest. And everything's up on YouTube.
All right, so we good?
Yes, we are.
All right. So we're gonna call this meeting to order at five thirty-one. We'll start with a roll call.
Sheida Martinez, District One.
Uh, Paul Carey and Phil King are not gonna be here today.
David Mers, District Four.
Herb Guyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. All right, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
First, with only American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor Kevin Portwood from the.
Medina Valley Yumson.
I was gonna say Castro. It's not. It's Medina Valley.
Yeah, Medina Valley United Methodist Church. Uh, would you pray with me?
Thank you.
Where we are thankful to be gathered here for this city council meeting. Where we pray for, um, we pray for our world. We pray for peace in the midst of chaos and war. Where we pray for this community and for the ways that people look out for one another and, um, build relationships. And from everything, from schools to businesses to churches and organizations and soccer games, everything the fabric of this place, where we give thanks for it. And we pray for this city council meeting, that voices will be heard and that our leaders would be empowered uh, to lead us for the betterment of this place. And, um, where would you guide us by your spirit in Jesus' holy name? Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. All right, uh, next we are gonna have citizens' comments. If you would like to speak for citizens' comments, please come up, state your name and your address. Let's keep comments to three minutes or less. And just please realize, I'll, I'm saying this every meeting in case people are new and don't know. Uh, if you bring up something during citizens' comments that is not on the agenda, we can't discuss it during that, legally according to Texas law, but, um, we can address it afterward. So would anybody like to speak for citizens' comments? Go ahead. Come on, Kyle.
I didn't understand the last part of what you said, but I don't think I'm bothering you, so I'll try.
Oh, no, you don't have to. I just, I let, uh, some people think that we can discuss when they come and speak for citizens' comments. And I just try and let, uh, people that don't know that we can't.
Uh, Kyle McVay, three oh seven Madrid, Casterville. And, uh, yes, I'm still plugging for the animal shelter. I understand you have a capital improvements workshop this coming Monday, which I plan on joining you just to put some two cents in. But please, 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 real considerate. And, uh, thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you, Kyle. All right, anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right, next one. I do have, uh, a comment from John Collins from two one nine River Bluff in Casterville. Uh, he sent this via email and I told him I would read it. He said, Dear Mr. Mayor, my wife and I are very concerned about the safety of trick-or-treaters and the numerous deep holes, six feet or more, within our neighborhood. These holes in many cases are guarded only by loosely installed flimsy vertical orange netting and are the result of the ongoing electrical modernization for the neighborhood. Prior to COVID, our neighborhood used to get hundreds of trick-or-treaters from all over, including many from San Antonio. With the quote, end of quote, COVID, uh, the possibility exists that this will happen again. I ask that you and the city council seek a means to reduce this hazard to trick-or-treaters and an obvious, uh, extensive liability for the city. With respect to that, you might want to review the legal copy of attractive nuisance. Two possibilities come to my mind. One, induce the contractor to better secure these holes and make it more difficult for an injury to any child to occur. Or two, station a police officer at each of the two entrances to the neighborhood and then have them turn away non-resident trick-or-treaters due to the hazards presented by the construction within the neighborhood. After all, we would not want any child to be injured. Resident trick-or-treaters are probably familiar with the situation and therefore less likely to induce, to be induced to do something stupid. Thank you for your kind attention. Okay. All right, anybody else? So we will close citizens' comments. Uh, next is consent agenda. Um, sorry. My brain is. It's a, it's a Tuesday. It's a Monday take two for me. All right, on the consent agenda, we have minutes for October tenth, twenty twenty-three, regular called city council meeting. Uh, resolution on twenty twenty-four ramp grant program revised amount. Uh, and, uh, ordinance on EGJ annexation of KF Flat Creek LP property. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We approve the consent agenda.
Great. Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the next one, um, do you have the presentation, uh, to put up on the?
Which?
For the, the next, sorry, the next item is discussion. Uh, and. Are we taking appropriate action? Oh, yes, to accept it. Uh, discuss and take appropriate action on, uh, the quarterly investment and financial reports. Normally, this would actually go into the consent agenda. Um, if you look in your packet, uh, the newer one is here. We still have some work to do on this, but we're working to make this a lot clearer, um, to demonstrate where we are financially. A good example of this would be, um, on, let's see, the third general fund year-to-date comparison. Um, so because this is the fourth quarter, uh, what you see on the left bar and the right bar, the left bar is the budget, the right bar is the anticipated amount for this time of year. And so like with sales tax, we would anticipate that we would be at a hundred percent by the end of the year, which we were at a hundred and almost fifty percent. So we, you can see that the performance was better than what was anticipated at that point in the budget. This will make more sense as we start going into, um, subsequent. And this will actually turn into a monthly report, not a quarterly report. And so you'll see where we are month to month, uh, based on where we would expect to. Another example would be, uh, property taxes, because those are typically handled in bulk. Um, you would expect to be further along toward the beginning of the year than toward the end of the year. So this is just a move to, to make it a little bit more clear.
Which, which one would you?
That one.
Yeah, so.
You don't have to be stay here either.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll continue to go through that. We, uh, advance it. There's a couple of things that we're still working on. So this is a good example of where we stand for, um, the tax collection for the last five years. If you look, um, the efforts that the, that the city's been making with the Chamber of Commerce and the local businesses, we are doing significantly better year over year. So, um, it, this, uh, like if you look at last year for, uh, or the last couple of years for COVID, we had some, like if you go from three years ago to, uh, two years ago to one year ago, the spike, we actually did really well with sales tax during COVID. I think one of the reasons is because a lot of people went to online shopping and you pay tax at the point of consumption.
Well, I think Waterbury, like we had, seriously, I think it was Waterbury. We, we went back and kind of looked at, he did the best. And, um, Waterbury's dropped through, went through the.
Right. Luckily, not literally, but.
We, we had a lot of people at the store because they were avoiding trying to hit the bigger stores in town. So we were getting hit constantly.
So even as we come out of COVID, we're still continuing to do even better, which is a great, it's a great sign of a thriving economy.
There's, there's a lot of people, they'd rather come here than have to go to San Antonio.
I don't blame you.
And they tell me all the time when they come in.
That's good. Great.
Although some of that increase might also be due to inflation.
Yes.
Sales tax.
But if you look at the difference in, and if we looked at a ten-year, uh, look at this, even with inflation, well, yes, we are in a period of hyperinflation.
I'm not saying that it's the whole story. I'm just saying it's contributing.
Absolutely. Yep. Well, just like to our expenses, it is definitely contributing. Um, I didn't get a chance to see, um.
So this is just, yeah, so one of the things we try to do is forecast and we do this for utilities. We do this for sales taxes. We do this for a couple of different revenue, uh, areas. But we try to, at the beginning of the year, we look at, uh, when we're building our budget, we look at what we did last year and what the trend has been over the life. So for instance, this particular chart, there is, uh, those percentages that are in the columns, uh, the column just to the right of the, uh, budget estimate, so far last budget estimate. And then the, there's a row of months starting with October. And to the right of that, you'll see the percentage of seven point six, eight percent, eight point eight, seven point five. Those percentages are the historical average percentage collections for that given month. So, and we have about, I don't know, twenty-plus years of data. So what we do is we take the total amount collected at the end of the year and then we look at how much each month contributed to that total amount collected and that creates a percentage. And then we take those percentages and we average them, but we add them all up and average them for that month. And so we, we try to do that. We try to look at, okay, what did we do last year? What do we look like next year's gonna do? And then we build a forecast and you can see in those columns, there's a couple of different options. You have the budgeted amount. And then to the right of that, as the year progresses, this, the, the, the chart gets filled in with the actual amounts that have been received. Um, but we try to, we try to estimate a couple of different ways. We look at, okay, what if it went down by two percent? What would that look like? What if it stayed flat? So year over year, there was no growth, but we had the same amount last year. And then what if it went up by a certain percentage? And on the far right, the percentage difference, that's the percentage of, uh, sales tax received compared to the budget. So that's how much more received for each month during this past year. You can see it was quite a bit. And that's kind of been my experience is that, um, generally speaking, it was sales tax. It's rarely just a few percentage points difference. It's either up a lot or down, unfortunately, down a lot. It doesn't, you know, it varies by, by larger margins. Anyway, that's what you're looking at when you look at those numbers. And you'll see for the student, those few close observers, you'll see that the total amount collected is, uh, one point six nine eight million in sales tax. But then below it says we currently collected one point seven six two. Why is there a difference? The difference is, uh, the difference in types of collections. So the, the sales tax for alcohol and some of the other sales taxes, uh, those are added into the overall number. You see the one point seven six two. So that's why that number is slightly.
Great, thanks. Um, and I've got a couple of questions about this one, uh, and maybe we could touch on that really quickly. So what I saw before was that the total, that we were behind on, um, property tax collections under budget, on property tax collections. But what this shows is collections we're over. So the right-hand bar would be O and M actual and debt service actual.
Well, yes, but we are over for debt service. So when we built the budget, one of the things that, that, you asked me not to harp on, but the mistake that I made was I over, I over calculated how much was going, going to go into the O and M portion of our property tax. And, uh, so the amount that I attributed that we'd received for O and M was, uh, less than what we actually ended up. Or I overestimated, so it was more than what we actually received. So that's what you're seeing here. The amount that received for debt service is slightly more than, well, it's more than what we originally budgeted. Cause I, I didn't budget the right amounts for debt service in O and M.
Okay.
Does that answer the concern question?
No, well, we'll dig into that.
All right, but that's, yeah.
And the goal is, uh, I, again, the goal is that we start getting these things. What you saw in previous quarters were a lot of charts and I'm trying to move more away from charts. Although they're good for backup information, I feel like these charts give us, if we can get them tweaked correctly, it gives us a much better view of where we actually stand with things.
Yeah, our, our, our overall, but property tax collection is just slightly higher than what we estimated.
Okay. Perfect. All right, next one. Um, expenditures to actual, uh, do you wanna talk to these?
Well, I'll, I'll just say that there's a summary to the left that I, I think is helpful. So it just tells you, and, and what we did, you all amend the budget throughout the year. But for these charts and these comparisons, I think what is most beneficial to you as a policymaker would be to see the original budgeted amount. So that's what you're seeing. No amendment applied. Obviously, when we spend more than we originally budgeted, we amend the budget to reflect that. But that's what you see here. So this is a comparison of budget to actual. And you'll see that, um, when you compare the, the budget to actual, our expenditures are about ten percent higher than what was budgeted. But that and our total.
This is still general fund, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The utility revenues is, that's a question here. Um, but the approved, uh, budget amendments are, uh, the ones that you see listed. So you had about.
I found this on the web.
Really? You had a mid-year budget amendment. That included the DC three, that was for IT. And you see, you see a list out in a date of when that amendment was done. And then below that, the final amendment and what that included and the date that that was done.
Great. Any questions on this one? All right, next slide. All right, you wanna go over this one?
I'm having to look up there. It's down here. It's not, show me your presentation.
Okay.
So this is just a breakdown by department. And again, we, we tried to show, uh, where we ended up at the end of the year by, uh, for each department as far as the amount expended. And then on a percentage basis, so that the, you'll see the amount, uh, to the left, the amount in, uh, in the blue bar is the amount of the original budget. And then to the right, the red bar is your actual expenditures and the percentage of budget that we actually expended. So you'll see, for instance, police were slightly over budget by one hundred and two percent. But in city administration, we're, we're slightly under at ninety-eight percent.
Why is tourism blank?
Don't know. Where is tourism?
Next to the last on the right.
At the last?
That'd be because no money was budgeted to them?
No, it was.
Oh, no, we had money budgeted.
I think that this is.
Well, the budget year that you have right now, but.
Isn't it gonna get paid out of fund balance?
Tourism doesn't.
Yeah, but it's still a budgeted expense, no matter the source of it. I think that there are some, uh, I just would, uh, ask you for a little bit of forgiveness on this. Leroy is putting this together, uh, with the changes a little bit last minute, so that may have just gotten missed on there. But we'll get an update on that one.
This, so now we're going to the utility funds. Uh, this is where that utility, utility revenue is. So our, our total revenues exceeded our budget amount by about eighty-five hundred dollars. That's what you see reflected here. And, and most of that came in the form of services and, uh, other. Let's see, other revenues? Or other services? And this is just a comparison of the expenditures. This is similar to the way we did it on the general fund. Just kind of show you, okay, here's what your original budgeted amount. And it looks a little, um. I think it's kind of exacerbated, if you will, because if you look at the starting figure on the left.
Right.
He started at seven point two million. So, so the delta between the two looks really, really big. It's actually about five percent. Um, and so that's what we put there. So when comparing, uh, your budget to actual, it's about five percent higher, around four hundred thousand dollars or so. And then we break, we, we give you the same thing as the general fund, show you kind of, this is what those expenditures included. And most of, in the utility side, this is reflective of the council making the, the policy decision to invest in utilities. These are CIP expenditures that, when you look at the CIP next Monday, you will see that in the adopted CIP, there are, uh, uses of fund balance for both the general fund and utility fund. Those uses of fund balance get reflected here. So that's what you're seeing. Most of those expenditures are all related to CIP expenditures where we elected not to issue bonds and, and further in debt, you know, ourselves. We're, we're spending some of that cash that the utility fund had on the. So that's what that is. And then this is a breakout just by utility. The way that we do this, we have utility administration. That's where we put all the employee costs. And, uh, John, uh, I say all the administrative costs, um, and some of the non-departmental type of costs go into utility administration. And then individual utilities generally are made up of, uh, any personal costs that are directly driven to that utility. And then to the extent that there is, for instance, in gas and electric, a purchase of, of gas and electric, that those are also reflected in these expenditures. And again, what, what they were saying, this will be a common, well, what we're planning on doing is doing away with the quarterly report and doing a monthly report. And the monthly report will have these items in it. And so as you look at the monthly report, that anticipated expenditure bar will be reflective of one twelfth more than likely. Again, uh, some of our utilities are seasonal. And so we will, we have, we have a seasonal forecast for utilities that will be reflected in these expenditures as well. So here's our airport file. Um, one of the things that we, we did realize as we're looking at the year ends is that we overestimated our fuel, uh, sales. Now that, we, it also means we overestimated the fuel expense. And, um, when we looked at the recently adopted budget, those, we, we probably overestimated in that budget as well. It's not a big deal. That just means that we're kind of less revenue, less expense related to the next year as well.
How can, how can facility rentals, revenues exceed the budget if we have leases for everything?
It's a great question. I think last year, remember, remembering twenty-three, when did we actually finish? We got a little bit of advantage from the USDA hanger. We were able to, there's two things that David did. One, we opened that hanger and started renting, renting it immediately. And so we got a little bit of a benefit that we weren't, that wasn't in the budget. The other thing he did was he created another hanger that wasn't originally planned for. A little tiny hanger because he had a little tiny plane that could go in it. And he rented that for whatever it was, four or six hundred bucks. So, um, I think that's what you're seeing there. Next year's, we probably, uh, I don't think we'd see this good.
And the intent is, in subsequent reports, we'll put, for things that are directly attributable, um, with revenues versus expenses like these, we'll put the revenues and the expenses right next to each other so that you can see, and see what the anticipated for each of them should be.
There's your budget versus actual on the various line items in the airport budget. For your information, um, we originally, the general fund, the, the, the city approved a loan to the airport for defense project. However, at the close of this fiscal year, the airport was able to pay for that fence project without negatively affecting its, its overall budget. So that's what it did. So there is no, so you won't see that loan carried forward in this current budget because they were airport's land. And we also got some really positive news in that the ramp grant, which is usually a fifty-fifty ramp, that's like the resurfacing things we do, lights and so there's stuff. We gotta put in seventy-five thousand to get seventy-five thousand or fifty thousand to get fifty, depending on the year, the amount. Well, going forward, I don't know if this is permanent or just this year or next year, but, um, certainly for this upcoming year, rather than us having to put up fifty percent, we're only gonna have to put ten percent.
Oh, nice.
And that's fantastic. So we had budgeted, there's like eighty thousand dollars in the airport budget that, um, we wanted to spend in order to get the same ramp grant from the cell, enable us to do some other things. One of the things we're looking at is fiber. But I, um, we fixed the, that, we had had a lot of issues with internet availability. Apparently, um, we switched providers recently and that provider's working out great. And it's the same provider that many of the commercial and other hanger folks use. And then we were using Verizon, they were using somebody else. And so now we're using that point-to-point internet that's working very, very well, so.
Yeah, well, we could also look at maybe a part-time airport manager.
Yeah, maybe. Um, yeah, I need to look and see the permanence of the ramp grant matching. Is that something just this year or is that gonna be for future years? And if that's the case, you're right, there, there might be enough money to actually do that. Um, historical fund balance with number of days on hand. So this is the very last slide, I think, in this report. And, um, this is just something we track for your benefit to, to show you, uh, you know, typically a hundred and twenty days is very, very conservative. Ninety is kind of the minimum that you'll have, that, that the general accounting practices recommend that you maintain as a fund balance. Um, and a hundred and twenty is, is kind of the top end of that. If you've got more than a twenty days, then that's, that's considered excess fund balance reserves that you should look at spending at one-time expenditures where it doesn't make sense to, to go and issue debt. Um, and generally that's for projects. So for instance, streets that are gonna last for fifteen years, a lot of times those aren't one-time monies. Repairs, on their hand, or maintenance, or, or some other major maintenance item, uh, for instance, like an AC unit on a building, you might spend one-time money for that because it doesn't make sense to try and issue some type of debt that would correlate to that. Um, I think that's it. Yep.
And go back to the, the very last one.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say also on this, I think that this is a good thing. It looks like we're reducing, we're actually, I think that our fund balance was too high. We kind of left it like that purposely in anticipation. But you need to start spending that and actually leveraging it for quality of life things. So I know that Scott and staff have been very diligent in trying to identify some of those things that we're actually spending the money that, that we're getting into the, to the fund.
So. That's what Monday it's gonna be about on some level, is we're gonna talk about, you know, our cash balances and where they sit and what we need to think about or what you don't mind running about. The other thing to keep in mind is as, all things being equal, as expenditures increase, the numbers of days on hand naturally decrease because the, the amount of money you have doesn't go as far. And so every year that we experience inflation and we have a slightly higher budget than the year prior, if nothing else happened and the, but, and the amount, we didn't spend any money, we didn't have any money, you'd still have fewer days on hand because your money doesn't go as far.
The Q and M four percent and dropped twenty percent of our days.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on the quarterly report or the strategy going forward? Okay. Then the other one is the investment report?
I don't, this is the only report I have.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
It's under seven.
Yeah, they had to divide it between investment and signing.
Now, one of the things just to be in mind is that most of our holdings are held at the bank, at Capital State Bank. We did negotiate a higher interest rate on those monies, and we should be sending, seeing that result in our interest statement soon. However, that interest is what we're dedicating to the city hall remodel. So the money we're making off the funds that are in the bank that are general fund, fund balance, we just saw, the interest on that is what's going to help fund the remodel of city hall without having to go to issue some kind of debt to do that. Again, we'll talk about that on Monday.
Okay. Great. Do I have a motion to approve the quarterly investment and financial reports?
So moved.
I got a motion by Sheena. Go to second.
I'll second.
All right. And a second by David. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is, consider and take appropriate action on approving a grant agreement between Best Friends Animal Society and the City of Casterville Animal Control Services for the Life Saving Cats Program.
For this, I've got Devin Frederickson, who's gonna talk about this grant opportunity and how it works and what we need to-
Well, good evening. As you'll notice, this agenda item has a lot of background. I wanted to make sure that the multiple documents that I provided, I tried to grab what the real substance that I would like to bring to y'all's attention. We are pretty close to a deadline with everything going on. I was trying to get this in a few weeks ago, but I've been out, and I really wanted to be here to represent this. This grant was pursued by my staff. Curl and Josh found this. And I think through a partnership with Petunias and some local representatives, got us involved with them. With this program, this is something that the city has never really done, which is focus on our cat population. With that, you know, there's some logistical stuff that we'll have to work out in our ordinances, which is listed in here that we have time to do that. This is just for the approval of the grant tonight. And then I'll be bringing stuff forward to y'all in the future. So with this program, our project goal is to provide services to ninety-nine cats to reduce, to have a save rate of ninety percent. So with that, we are currently at zero percent. So it's a pretty achievable goal. The fifteen thousand dollars, on average, we spend a hundred to, up to a hundred and fifty dollars is the cost. So that's right below, I think it's like fourteen thousand and some dollars, if we were to use that completely just for the ninety-nine cats. So we have some wiggle room to do more than ninety-nine, but we have enough to meet that quota. I know that was a concern that I had because this isn't a budgeted item. It's through a grant, so it needs to pay for itself. There's additional four thousand dollars for supplies for the program, traps, everything, everything that fit in there. You know, my staff's already investigated the cost with that, and it exceeds, or the cost is less than what the grant is providing. We've had some donations over the past few years, so we have things that can be utilized for the collection. Do y'all have any questions right off the bat? Yes?
Are there any liabilities or risk associated with this that could cost the city money?
Josh has been fully trained as an animal control officer for collection and release, if that is something the city wants to do for cats. So it's no different than any of the other animals that we collect, if we want to go with the bare minimum basis. If we, if I bring back the ordinance and the city does want to do a capture and then re-release where they collected it, we would have all that legal provided. I have some of the ordinances already drafted, but a lot of that stuff, I think, needs time. And then I think Debra and I had discussed, it needs to have a, was it a public meeting to review it since it's an ordinance change?
Depending, depending on it, I guess it is a, I mean, there's things involved.
Okay.
And we might do a change.
So what you're talking about with this program, currently, the strategy is to have people volunteer to bring stray cats in. And what you're saying is that we can also do a catch and release?
Currently, we don't take any cats. We utilize either the county, or I believe we direct them some local volunteers. Petunia, I think, helps with that. But the city currently takes in no cats. So this would be a completely new endeavor for us.
So how does the program work then? I guess that's where I'm confused.
Could I?
Yes.
This is important.
Yes.
Okay. So historically, state law for humans, you know, persons, including a governmental entity, quote, taking possession of an animal, treating it, and then releasing it back to, back to, quote, the law, right? That's, under state law, that has always been considered an abandonment of an animal. Because once you start the care and feeding of an animal, under state law, that's your animal, right? So historically, that's where the capture, neuter, and release programs were bumping up into, you know, conflict with state law. So the legislation just changed, so with this last round of legislation there, it's now, all the books that say that governmental entities can establish a program like this, and, you know, so long as you put your ordinance on the books and follow the guidelines set up in those legislative changes, you can do these kind of activities to help control your number, your number of feral and stray cats. So that's kind of the legal-
So if we take a stray and we get it neutered, we can release it then?
Yes, you can release it so long as you, you know, go through, because you have to have it, you did, or you gotta do, you know, there's those certain things that you have to do to show that this cat is part of the feral colony and has been treated and analyzed.
And the other question I have is, this is gonna be a new workload for Josh and for Curl, and they're both doing this. They back each other up, right?
Mm-hmm.
So are we gonna have a problem with hours for Josh? If this program gets enacted, are we gonna have to hire another person? What is your view on that?
I would say this is currently not more than we're doing, because half the time we collect them, they do their best to hold on to them or try to figure out a solution instead of having a plan of action in place. So I do think that we will gain a little bit of time, but in the long run, I think we're saving it. Because sometimes, they do their best in finding volunteers, but I know in the past, they've taken it upon themselves to take them home or, you know, spend, you know, time trying to find it. And that's time worked if they could be doing other things, so.
In the facility where we just invested, I think it was eighty thousand dollars last year, fifty thousand dollars to improve it, is there cages for cats?
So no, they cannot be in the same ventilation room. The shed outside, I've already gone through with them, Josh and them, they're, they've cleaned it up. We had a shed that was very just trashed. They've cleaned it up, got it ready, they say that one. We already had a donated air conditioner unit, a window unit. They, that's the minimum requirement that the, we've already submitted a lot of this information to Best Friends to make sure I didn't have issues later on. And I didn't want to invest a large amount of money into additional renovations. Of course, y'all would have to approve for something that could be a temporary thing. Because in the bottom of this, if the program, you know, I don't feel like it's successful, or y'all see an issue with it, we are not committed afterwards, moving forward, which I think is important, because any kind of new program like this, there could be unseen variables that, you know, cause us issues.
This is like a six-month program?
One year. So the thirty-first of October to the thirty-first of October.
So I'm still confused. Can people volunteer and get vouchers to go and get their cats spayed or neutered? Or do we, are they cats that we have to capture, or what does that look like?
I, I believe there's some options for that, but in our grant, or in our agreement, you know, the focus is for, to, well, the focus is to lower the non-neutered and spayed animals. So that still meets the requirements, but you know, that, our goal would be to try to get some of these, because, you know, the ultimate issue is a stray cat has kittens. Kittens are great. Everyone loves them. They turn into cats. They get tired of them. They let them out, and this cycle continues. But, you know, there's nothing to say that we won't adopt them out. That is always an option. But, you know, then we've collected it, and then if someone, for some reason, it's an outdoor cat, it's not repopulating the area.
Are you asking, is there a voucher program tied to this where we would give someone a voucher to go get their-
I'm just asking, yeah, how it's put together, whether we are going and collecting a hundred percent of the cats that go into this program, or if we are offering it to people, because like, we, I mean, Kyle's helped us out with that. We've spent a lot of money on, and when the cats get away from you, one second, when the cats get away from you, then, I mean, like they populate like crazy.
What we are doing, so, I, what I know of it, and I'll let Devin speak to whether I'm right or wrong, but is that this particular program, it's, first off, the grant is limited to nineteen thousand dollars, it's a very small amount. It's not a lot of money. And its main purpose is for cities, whereas right now, when we get a cat complaint, we do nothing about it. We can't do anything about it. We might, if it's a danger or whatever, wipe it down. That's about it. What this will allow us to do is to take those cats, get them spayed or neutered, and then tag their ears and re-release them. And that's what this is about.
That was really what my question was. Are we, is this, it wasn't clear in the presentation if we were gonna go and get them and release them, or if we were gonna offer up vouchers. So I just didn't understand.
Yeah, I think we're just going, we're capturing and releasing.
Okay, cool.
And that's what this program is focused on. Now, it may, there are other things we are trying to do. Our staff is constantly looking for ways to benefit the animal population. And so we are looking at other programs, but this particular program is really focused on that. It's about, what are we doing about our feral cat population and how do we-
Perfect. I'm gonna entertain Kyle.
Just real quick, if any way we can work with it, will we have to provide vouchers if somebody wants to adopt the animal?
Perfect.
I mean, if you're just gonna neuter, spay or neuter or release, no. But if somebody's willing to adopt the animal and Curl and Josh can, they can, we'll provide vouchers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Did ESC have anything to do with finding this?
I'm sorry?
Did ESC have anything to do with finding this grant?
No, EMC, no.
On the last page of the packet, it, item number two, it says, "The following training and mentorship within ninety days of this agreement at a time designated between Leah Long and Curl." So it only mentions Curl. Does Josh have all that training for, as far as community cat programming and kitten life-saving programming?
I believe that this was mentioned just because Curl is not a certified-
Yeah, she's our co-tenant, right.
Control officer. Yes. So she's in the middle of training with her stuff, and Josh is in the middle of training of the code stuff. So I think that's why, but Curl was the designated point of contact with them. So I'm sure that, you know, that should probably say city staff. But yes, that, I mean, everything that Curl is trained on, Josh is trained on. I mean, Josh is the know, the go-to guy for animal control and Curl, because they both can know everything, yeah.
Yeah, and we might want to change that to staff because in the event they leave, remove the names and just put Cashville City Staff?
Yeah. In the actual agreement, I think everything is referred to as the department. It's the City of Cashville Animal Services Department. It used to say just animal services, and I didn't know. That's sort of the same point, so.
Cool.
Thank you for noticing that.
All right. Any other questions?
One other question.
Let's let David go first.
Can you, 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 can
That's awesome.
All right.
Great. So any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the grant between Best Friends Animal Society and the City of Castroville Animal Control Services for the Life Saving Cats Program?
So moved with the exception of the corrections that were mentioned by myself and the other city council members.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on application submitted for an open board position on the library advisory board. Debra?
Yes. Excuse me, y'all have one application this, tonight for consideration, Crystal Stutz, which is here. And if you have any questions for her, and she may introduce herself, she submitted an application to be placed on the library board and as a second choice if we have anything for planning and zoning. We do have two alternate positions on the library at this time. If you do consider the planning and zoning, we have three openings there.
Okay. But the item for tonight is only on the library?
As of right now, it's shown as the library because that's the first choice.
Okay.
So, but.
Well, thank you for stepping up for this. Would you introduce yourself for those that don't know you and express why your interest and, and what you can bring to help us out?
Sure. I'm from, my name's Crystal Stutz. I'm from Bandera County, so just on the other side of the dam. I moved here because it's a straight shot to, to my job and that was really convenient and I, I still wanted to have that small town feel. When I moved here though, that, that feel was even, even better than I imagined. It, it kind of reminded me of a, you know, Gilmore Girls set because I've learned and met all of my neighbors. You know, when I was sick, my neighbors came and mowed my lawn for me. I've been there for them. I met her before he, I knew he was a city councilperson because I met his dogs. I, I'm an avid walker with my dog Ranger Gus, so he knows a lot of people in town as well. And I love history. Studied government and history and Russian, which has come in handy, I can tell you very much, in San Antonio, Texas. But yeah, I, I studied government and history and, and really got involved in the landmark end when I moved here. So that was kind of my opening to the Alstation community. And I have been a patron of the, the library and just wanted to make sure if, if I express opinions about the city and what's going on in the city, that I also contribute to it.
That's always appreciated, for sure. Does anybody have any questions? Then do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Crystal? And is it Stutz or Stutz?
It's Crystal Stutz.
Stutz, okay, thank you.
I mean, we approve Crystal Stutz to the alternate positions, I guess number two would be for two years?
Yes.
So I, I would recommend we would approve her for the second vacant alternate position on the library.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Always excited to have people that are passionate about the library. That's good. Okay, next item is presentation and possible action on adopting an ordinance on utility rates to go into effect January first, twenty twenty-four.
The last council meeting, we discussed utility rates and one of the, the kind of feedback that, that we received from council was, let's look at a flat percentage increase and what would that look like? As opposed, because the, the percentage increases depending on the tier were all over the place. And so we took that back and that's what this will talk about. However, as you all know, last night, we had a discussion about utility policies and conservation, et cetera. And so subsequent to last night's meeting, the staff has had some official thoughts and conversation about whether, especially as we looked at the, our rates in comparison to surrounding cities, we're already, we're already fairly high. We're one, number one or number two depending on which group you're looking at and which rate, which utility you're looking at. So that, that's another thing for us to consider is whether or not these are the rates we're going to try to adopt tonight or do we want to actually look at something else that would be, that would be more of a rate change, not, not just a straight across the board rate increase. So I'll get to that in a second. See, it started, it was thinking where it doesn't like. Okay. Well, it don't allow me to access. There's that free one I was talking about.
I saw it earlier. Didn't know.
Free one.
I don't even know, actually, why it's used.
No.
Yeah, with your, with your password up there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think. What, does it give you Wi-Fi or does it give you access to, gives you Wi-Fi? Let me do it. No, that is great. Okay. So one of the things we talked about was when, when, what's the earliest time we could try and, and make these rates effective? And the short answer is January first, we hope, because we will need to make some, some changes to the InCode system, because we are adding this power cost recovery factor that's going to require some actual software programming to, to create a program that will calculate our rates that we have needed to. So we are in the queue with InCode to get that done, but we do probably need to get this decision made sooner rather than later so we can finalize the rates for next year.
Are you going to go, are you going to talk about, just go back and revisit what we discussed last time about why the need and why, why we're looking at?
I certainly can. So our, I mean, the, the short story is we, we need to pay debt service for the bonds that we issued, and the growth does not happen in the timeframe that we were anticipating. So we're slightly behind on our, our new utility customers, the addition of new utility customers. We've had some like six or six or eight houses in, we've had warehouses built in Castroville proper than outside of Castroville proper. That's a true statement as of right now. That definitely is not what we were anticipating. So that, you know, the, the C I P program that we adopted, the capital improvement program we adopted relies heavily on new, the addition of new utility customers. So in the interim, it's become necessary to look at adjusting our rates.
And the investments that we're making, these are not new issues, right? These are fixing old issues that weren't previously addressed.
Yeah, so the electric utility, I, I can't speak to how much investment's been made over the last twenty years, because I just, I don't have that much knowledge in my head. But I know that, like for instance, you know, the River Bluff electrical investment we're making now, which is several million dollars, that's been something we've known about for quite a while. And we know that Country Village also has a, a similar issue that's going to be coming, it's, it's, it's a bill that'll be coming due fairly soon, has a similar problem. Water and sewer, the city made a major improvement by building the sewer plant and expanding the sewer plant. But as far as the actual lines in the ground, the water and sewer lines in the ground, very little has been done to improve the water or sewer lines for, in any consequential manner.
Decades.
You know, in that, you know, decades, yeah. The last major projects were drainage related and those are just, we.
And those are twenty years old.
Yeah, they're twenty years old and we, we have some pretty serious drainage improvements in U P M A that we'll discuss on Monday as well. So, yeah, so this is the, I think the city council's prudent effort to try and, and maintain the system we have. This isn't, and, and we are also looking at making some improvements, but for the most part, this is really about maintenance. It's not, unfortunately, it's not like expanding the system and that kind of thing. All that's being done by developers, they're paying for that. This is about taking care of the, the existing system and it really not been cared for in the way it needed to be.
And even then, these rates will just cover the fixes we've already done, not further fixes.
That's correct. So further fixes, and we'll talk again about that on Monday, our plan to issue future debt, we had originally, two years ago, when we started the C I P and adopted it, the intent was to be able to issue, on average, six million dollars of new debt each year for the utility system to invest, it's about thirty-six million dollars over a six-year period, to invest in the utility system. We have borrowed ten of that thirty-six. We are not planning on issuing additional funds at this time until the forecast for growth and new utility payers and that sort of thing, until we get something that, that proves to us that we're going to be able to pay that debt. So we're not in a, we're, we're not in a terrible mind, but, but this is the prudent action to take at this stage is to, to look at our rates and look at increasing them.
And the investments that we've made, I just want to be very clear, these are not about the new developments. These are not investments into expanding it for the new developments, because as we all know at council, those developments are paying for themselves. They're, some of them are getting reimbursed through different agreements, some by the, the new residents that will move in, some through, well, the original one was through some tax reinvestment. But all of that stuff is paying for itself. The growth is paying for itself in the utility system. We still have a tremendous amount that we've got to do in historic Castroville, and not just the historic core, but like all of the pre-existing, the stuff that's been here for only, you know, twenty, thirty years.
Current Castroville.
Current Castroville, yes.
Well, I mean, just to exempl, so the, we, we replaced a major water line on Lafayette and then we repaved the Lafayette Street. We've made some sewer improvements. We've got the A M I project going, which is a, well, it's more about efficiency, but that's, again, if it's a new development, even if it's Country Village, they pay for all of the, the cost of the new meters. The cost that we're paying for is for the existing system. So yes, that's correct. It's all, this is all investment in the existing system for the older part of Castroville. And unfortunately, if I were to estimate the cost of the needed improvements, they far exceed, they far exceed our ability to prove them, to, to fund them at this time. Even the thirty-six million dollars was never going to fix all the water and sewer issues that existed. It was just going to try and take care of the most important or most pressing water, sewer, electric and gas issues that might arise. And that's what we were trying to do in, in the C I P. So again, we'll probably have more in-depth discussion about that on Monday.
Great, thank you.
So we have kind of three charges that you'll see on the bill. You'll see the customer charge. The customer charge is, is the base rate, and it, it reflects the cost of delivering that service to your home, right? It does not reflect the consumption of the service. So for instance, you have a customer charge for water. We just talked about the fact that our water lines are constantly, we're, they're, we're literally constantly maintaining and fixing broken lines. Many, many of them need to be replaced. We can't afford to replace them, so we're just, we're maintaining them. And the cost of that maintenance does nothing but increase every year with inflation. So that customer charge is intended to help cover that cost. Then you have your actual consumption charges. That's what you're paying to use the water, to use the gas, to use the electric. The power cost recovery factor is only applicable to electric and gas, and that's the indicative of what it costs us to actually buy the electricity or buy the gas. So you have the delivery charge, which is delivering it to you. That's, you have an energy charge, which is what the, the actual amount you used. And then you have what we call a power cost recovery factor, which is the, the amount it costs us to go and buy that, whether it's gas or electric. So then we look at our, what, what this is going to look at is by utility, so we're going to go through electric, water, sewer, et cetera, and gas, and what the proposed rate changes are. And one of the things that you all have requested is help us understand what the consumption is, how much are people using, and how much of that is residential versus commercial. So again, this presentation is meant to answer some of those questions. So for electric, for instance, your residential out is very, very small. Now that's in large part because our electric utility geographic area is basically limited to our city limits. When you go beyond our city limits, it's a different electric provider. It's either Medina Electric Cooperative to our west and north, or it is CPS to our east and, north and east of south and east. That's all in the CPS area, our CPS territory. So you, so it makes sense that you would see a whole lot of residential out, outside city limits. And then again, you can kind of see, here's, here's what our consumption looks like on a monthly basis. And these are in kilowatt hours, so that's millions of kilowatt hours consumed each And when you look at our total number of connections, so we have one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine connections. Of those, residential inside makes up about roughly eighty percent, seventy-nine point seven percent. Here's your commercial electric consumption. And just to, again, when we look at total build amounts, so your residential makes up eighty percent of your total number of users at, and their total build is one point six million. Your commercial electric makes up fifteen percent of all electric consumers, but they, their build amount's one point two million. So they're paying for roughly forty, just using rough math, about forty percent of your total electric, but they only represent fifteen percent of the number of connections. Just tells you how much commercially users use when it comes to electric. And then this is a breakdown of the rate table. And again, you're going to see decreases because we are lowering the energy charge and adding a power cost recovery rate. So this looks a little misleading because it makes it look, makes it look like you're going to pay less for electricity. You're going to pay about the same amount for electricity, slightly, depending on, on your user group, you might pay slightly more because of that piece, that new P C R F factor that is getting added to the bill.
Depending on your user group, can you explain that?
So instead of paying eleven, point eleven cents, you're going to be paying point zero four six six.
That'll be your energy charge, and then added to that will be a P C R F rate.
Right.
And is that, is that standard across all users? Is that different for?
No, the P C R F is standard. The, when you look at the actual proposed twenty-four rates, so residential inside point oh four six six, senior outs inside is point oh four one, and then commercial inside is point oh four six six. I may have, I want to say I may have just misstated, but it may be a slight increase for everybody. I just know that sometimes based on the amount of consumption that you have, your net cost may be basically the same.
In the utility bill comparison, a few slides forward, it's a difference of like five dollars between current bill versus the new bill.
Correct. For electric.
For electric. One seventy cents versus one eighty-one.
So we did the same thing for gas. Again, just showing you, here's what your residential inside versus outside is. The vast majority are inside the city limits. A lot of this has to do with prior decisions about the gas system itself and expanding it. We've been very, very conservative with expanding our gas utility. I personally think that's been a mistake because it's, there's, we've missed on opportunities to bring in new customers. And, and the base, the, the basis is the more customers you have, the less it should cost each of us to be customers of that utility. The more you can spread out your costs, so having more customers is better in almost every instance. So most of our, you'll see again, most of our residential is going to be inside the city limits. And you can see, yeah, there's the January, February, March, when it's cold, that's when you see the, the higher consumption and the higher bills and higher payments. You can see that gets doubled in January and February, that, that cost is compared to the rest of the year. There's your commercial gas. And outside again is a small percentage. That's the people just on the, oh, that's our, I think this is what I was talking about last night. We provide gas to a hatchery down.
The shrimp one?
Near Lacoste. And so, yeah, to shrimp farm. And so that's, I think, part of that usage that's outside city limits. And you can see those bill amounts. And now this is not quite the same as what you see on the residential, you have the residential commercial compared to, I'm sorry, residential electric compared to commercial electric, where commercial electric only made up fifteen percent of the customers, but they made up forty percent of the bill. When it comes to gas, your total gas connections, your commercial connections are what, ten, yeah, around the, about eleven percent of all gas connections and their total build amount. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a total amount, but no. But just looking at like month to month, yeah, maybe it's close. Never mind, hold on. So they make up about eleven percent of the total customer base and they're, they're paying probably thirty to forty percent of the, the residence. So once again, commercial users of gas are much higher consumers than residential on So here's the proposed rate adjustments for gas. And this is directly tied to the contract that we just signed with, it's a, it's a six-month service contract with CPS. They increased their cost to us by fifty percent. And we are absorbing some of that cost increase and passing on the balance in the form of a rate increase to our gas customers. Here's your wastewater rates. Now, again, we average your wastewater consumption during the winter months when people are less likely to be watering the yards, and we take those averages to then estimate how much water we're actually treating at our wastewater treatment plant for each of, each residential and commercial user. Or I'm sorry, each residential user. Commercial gets charged full rate all year round. So they don't get the benefit of the averaging, that's only for residential users. And you can see what the proposed bill is. And this is where you're going to see the largest rate adjustment, and you can see that certainly by the percentage increase, sixty-seven, fifty-four. It's a. It's a, this is significant increase over what we're currently charging. So it's going to be more important this year than ever to make sure that you're really watching your water consumption during these months. In our household, we like to leave the faucet running for the cat. Cats will come up and jump up, they want to drink out of the sink. And I have informed my family that we need to.
Get a bowl?
You can, well, get a bowl, you can turn it on, but you, but don't just walk out of the room and then 10 minutes later come back. And it's usually just a drip. It's a little trickle, but I still don't want little trickles going for 10 or 15 minutes. It all adds up. All right. And then here's our residential water. And again, we try to break down the consumption, your total, and I think this is the one where there might have been a mistake. There might have been a flip-flop because it shows total connections 830, residential 1175. I think, I think it's supposed to be total connections is 1402.
Yeah, that's what she said last night.
Residential is 1175.
They flip-flop the total water connections between commercial and residential.
Yeah. But again, we can see under residential consumption, the total bill is 841,000. And that's for the roughly 1,100 connections or 1,175. And then under commercial, the total build is 370. So once again, we're looking at like 30 or 40% of the total amount of consumption to commercial. But commercial, the commercial connections themselves only make up about 15% of our total user group. So 15%. And the reason that's important is when, I know that we don't like our, I'm not any happier about paying a $500 utility bill than anybody else. But the fact of the matter is that when you look at our system, the, on a percentage basis, commercial users make up 15% of the total base. But they generally pay 40% of the total cost. Does that make sense? So this is where we kind of made some adjustments, looking at their, a flat percentage. So rather than, for instance, the original, I got to make sure this is right. You, there's four columns here. You have FY 2023, the proposed FY 24, percentage proposed FY 24, percent difference. So I believe that FY 2, it says 2004, but FY 2024, that second column is what we originally proposed. And then based on the feedback we got from council, looking at a flat rate, the, the column in green to the right of that is the new rate. That would be the flat percentage. It'd be a 15% across the board. So you can see like in the 0 to 5,000 gallon range, where we're currently at $5.35. We had originally thought about going to 637, but to make it a flat 15%, it would be $6.15. So that's one option. Now subsequent to, yeah, I'll, I'll finish this out. So there's a look at the rates. Oh my gosh. Here's your commercial inside and outside rates. And I, I want to point this out. Yeah, so there is a difference in price if you're inside versus outside. You see that? For both residential and commercial.
This is my last one. FY 23, there was no difference.
I don't know. FY 23.
There was no difference between commercial inside.
Well, that's what I thought. But this is showing that there was. That's why I was, when I, yeah, that's why I was screaming, I was like, why is there? It should be residential, I thought was the same whether it's inside or outside, right? So I don't know why this is showing a difference. I have the other presentation, I'll have to pull it up and see if I can get it slide by slide.
Well, let's finish going through this. I don't think that we can make a decision on this without having the actual numbers on it. So we'll have to put it off to the next council meeting.
Well, I want to, I want to have a little bit more discussion to, to see if we want to pursue another idea that the, the staff had after last night's meeting.
All right, great.
We need to.
Yeah, let's get through this.
I don't know why that, these numbers are off. I do think this is, that, so one option is going to be a flat rate, like you see here. The electric and gas are pretty much doing the same. What we're really looking at is water and sewer. Right? And primarily the water rate. I think that's really where we kind of, and I'm really kind of looking for, these aren't rhetorical questions. I'm really kind of looking to make sure that I'm on the same page with you. We're probably, when we did the proposed rates, you were good with the electric that was proposed. You were good with the gas that was proposed. No one likes the sewer, but we really haven't thought of a better way to do the sewer rate unless y'all can think of a better way to do sewer rate. It's really based on their water consumption. So where we're really emphasizing and looking at making adjustments is in the water rate. And the feedback we got from, this was a, this is what council merged was look at a flat rate. That's what this, this does, it looks at a 15%. And then I'm going to show you another option that needs to be vetted by Schneider, but the staff looked at after last night's meeting. You also asked for a bill. So this is what that bill would look like. And this includes all of that extra stuff. So I think that was one of Councilman Dyer's concerns was we're looking at a bill, but it's not, it doesn't include all of, all, it's not an actual bill. It just included the items that change. What does it look like on an actual bill? So that's what this is. And I believe I've got a side-by-side comparison. Yeah. There's your concurrent. And you can see after these changes, a bill that was currently $483 would become $545.
So this is based on 1,428 kilowatt hours. What is our average?
I don't know.
We use like under 1,000, which generally gets eyebrows when we come to pay the bill. So that's probably significantly less than the average.
I agree with that, but I don't know what the average consumption is. Things will figure out through the next meeting.
And this is based on 21,000 gallons of, it's really confusing when it says 21. And I don't think there's any designation that says that's 1,000 gallons. I've heard, you know, the social media warriors talking about, how did I use 21 gallons? And it cost me $153.
My coworkers are all amused when I bring in my water bill that just says X, means X water.
So this shows the proposed, you know, proposed rates as we brought into you at the prior meeting. And then the next one shows if we went to a 15% rate, what that would look like. And you can see at the bottom, the change is not much, it's $3. It's a large difference in the total bill amount.
So the total bound difference between these two bills is $62.45.
How do you get that?
I did math.
You're saying between.
Sorry, he opened the door.
So I thought you were talking.
Like between the two water schemes.
Yeah, I just said between the two different, fit the flat rate. Yeah, you're saying between the original bill.
Total bill.
Yeah, 62 bucks.
Between the two water schemes is a difference of the 15% increase drops it by about $3 for the bill to sell.
Right. And your $62 difference between this first one, like 43 and 545?
Yep.
Yeah. So that would drop from 62 to 59. But it's still a lot. I mean, it's still, there's no way around it. That's a, that's a 10% increase for a, for a.
I did want to say relative to whether the water rates are different currently. I, in my notes, which are on the set in stone record of what happened. The presentation last time had different rates and Mr. Dixon was recommending to drop the difference between them.
What we had adopted last year though was we merged, we took out the difference between inside and outside.
So there's kind of another side-by-side to look at those different rates. And then.
And the customer wouldn't be seeing this breakdown, they'd just be seeing the bottom number.
Right. They'd see whatever, they'd follow whatever tier they're in. So 637 versus 6, 615. 535, 637, 615.
You said you had another option for us?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure why this total bill is 592. What are they looking at?
Let's look at that next time we come back and take a look at this. If you don't, let's just, we've got too much warm out here that we can't like move forward with it, but at least we can get it.
Well, I wanted to show, I have another, I received emails this afternoon that I wanted to, that has an alternate rate proposal. So one of the things that we were looking at is what if we didn't impact, um. What if we made the, why is this on? I'm looking at her presentation. But basically we looked at what if you left the bottom tier alone. So right now we're charging 535 because we left that at 535. And then we had a graduated increase in the subsequent tiers. So that the difference between those tiers became greater and greater. And the example that I have in front of me is 32 cents between tier two and tier, uh, tier one and tier two. And then that goes to 53 cents.
Are you presenting that?
No, it's not. That's why I was just going to do it. But this is something we would need to prove out and make sure. The big issue is we have to have revenue capture in order to, I mean, that's the whole point. But another, and also you all proposed a flat rate based on the discussion we heard from you last night. We were thinking as staff, what if instead of going like a flat 15% across the board, what if we went 5%, 10%, 15%, 20%, 25%? That kind of thing where the more water you consume, the, the, your rate was, became considerably higher.
Right.
I just need to figure out, one of my questions back staff was great, but what, what percentage of our users fall into, like our current bills? What do they fall into that tier one, tier two? Do we have that information? Well, no, we're still going to get that. So that's what I need, we need to do to bring that back to you. Before we do all that work, you know, what's more appealing? Do we want to look at a flat rate adjustment? The proposed, we have, so you have kind of three options. Proposed rates, a flat rate adjustment, which was ended up being 15% to make it easy on the water side. Or do you want us to explore what it would look like at some type of graduated level on the water side? That may or may not be a graduated level.
I like the idea that we just, we need to see the numbers.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to really dig that, dig that apart and make sure.
The person who uses the most water pays the most. Right. Okay. So that's what I'm going to go back to and have them look at. What I'm going to try to do is see if we can make something that would be pretty simple to convey, like a 5, 10, 15, like something that's graduated like that. But again, I need to look at our historic revenues and see how they fall into the classes and see what that would do if we did that. If we left the bottom tier alone, didn't make any change there on the water side. They're still going to pay a little bit more in gas. They're still going to pay a little bit more in electric. And they'd still be hit, importantly, they'd still be hit with that sewer increase. Because again, I don't know any other way to slice the sewer fee other than, I can look at, I will also look at whether a graduated system would work on the sewer side. If we left people alone who were at below a certain usage in the sewer system. We left that, that, we said, whatever you're paying today, that's what you're going to pay next year. And the increases will start if you're in the 3,000 or whatever, whatever that is.
I think we need to be really careful about the sewer ones because that can hit people pretty hard. But I, I think that the biggest or the highest value target, there would be the water. Because as we saw this year, as we saw last night, thank you, that presentation was perfect. Understanding that we are, like during this drought time, we are getting really, really close to what we actually have in, in terms of water rates. So I think that, and people are using, they, when we were supposed to reduce up to 40%, I think it was what, 34% for the year? We have trended upward from that.
They increased year over year, every month. It's crazy.
So I think that's our highest value. Are you guys?
So I'm going to work on graduated rates. I think that's really, I mean, that's what I kind of heard from last night. But I'm going to look at graduated rates for, for water and sewer bowl. Let's see what we can do. That, that assumes leaving the lowest tier or maybe the lowest two tiers alone.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yes.
I'll say it verbally, I'm in support of looking at that.
Okay. Well, I just need to see how that, how that breaks out. Again, what you saw was commercial, it's true, you know, the commercial users make up 40% of our users. Where, like they're on average using more water and more whatever, like more gas. And that should, I mean, I know you're day-to-day analytics guy, that should mean that 40% of our revenue on average would be, would be, they're going to be the higher rate payers. They would be the ones impacted. 60% is going to fall in that lower group. But of that 60%, I think will lead, my short answer is I think without looking at numbers, that we should be able to something like that.
We want to make sure that we're not like driving costs for our businesses out of the roof as well. So we just got to be careful with that portion of it. So, you know, and partially.
Delicate dance.
I know. Well, I think that maybe we look at doing a higher tier change for residential versus commercial. That might be a good thing. Because the residential, because what we talked about yesterday was that the, the businesses don't really have much opportunity to conserve, but the residences do. You don't have to water during, I mean, I know it's tough. We put a lot of money into landscaping and it is tough to watch it die. But the, the commercial, they, they really can't reduce that much. I'm sorry, I heard about something else.
Do we have an estimated cost for a stocker upgrade to add the PCRF into the billing process?
It's just a program that they have to do. And I think it was 2,500 bucks. See the 1,500, that's the, the normal fee is between 1,500 and 2,500 for in code to.
And is that in the budget?
And, yeah, it would be recouped by our fee increases either way. But yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
We'll have this for a decision on, on November. I am going to start working on the PCRF implementation for electric and ga, I think gas is right there, but for electric and indoor. Because that, I don't think it's the best, I think I've heard that they're all supportive of those.
Yeah. Let's just be really careful about presenting accurate numbers for next time. Thanks. Okay. It's a good discussion. I mean, it's tough. Anytime life costs us more, it really, when I first moved here, somebody was telling me, and this was seven years ago. One of my neighbors was saying, just understand that your utility rates are going to go up 10% a year cumulatively for the next five years. And it didn't happen. And so the increases didn't go to pay for some of the stuff. And, you know, we're just playing catch-up. And if we don't make changes now. And if we don't make changes now, it's just going to, we're going to burden future people with even higher percentage rate increases, so. All right, thank you. All right, next item is staff reports.
I don't have a lot to add to staff reports other than there's a couple of things. On, if you look in community development, you'll see that one of the new additions is you can now apply for and pay for a permit online. So that's, that's been something that I really appreciate Brianna tackling, and it's something I want to be able to do for anything. The way that we are going to stay ahead of growth and be, I think, fiscally prudent, especially about, you know, I think one of the great gripes is that government just expands and expands and expands. And one of the ways you can control some of that is by leveraging technology and being more efficient. And the AMI is one way to do that, and our website, leveraging the ability to people go to pay at the kiosk, to pay online. And if you can minimize customer interaction and provide them all the information they need online, you can really control that, that cost escalation in future years. And that's been a big emphasis of, of our organization over the last couple of years. So I'm proud of that innovation, if you will, that Brianna's affected in her, her department. And like I said, we're trying to do similar things throughout the organization and there have been other changes that you all are aware of that we made over the last two years as well. We, of course, had the national night out. I, I think it was fairly well received. We certainly some room for improvement, and that, I think, that'll be something we want to have after any major event. Is have kind of a what went well, what didn't go well, what could we do better for next year? So we need to schedule that and do that with staff. Similar with the eclipse, I think there was some fear that Helen and her group would be eating breakfast tacos for the next, you know, three months. And as it was, they sold out fairly quickly before the main event. So that's fantastic. I think they had over a thousand people come out for, for the annual eclipse.
Right about there, yeah.
So that's, that's, that's great. We are in the midst of planning for the, the total solar eclipse. It's hard for us to, to gauge the level of interest. We hear the really terrible stories about cities being inundated by, by people. But generally, those stories are in areas where they're not, they're not big populous areas like San Antonio, where there's a lot of different tourism options for, for people to, to go and look. So I don't think it's going to be as bad as we've heard. There'll definitely be a lot of people coming to this area, for sure, to the region.
There's going to be a lot of people coming through this area, and that's something that people have got to be aware of.
They're going to be going to Honda, they're going to be going to Bandera, and they're going to be trying to get a little further west to get a little better glimpse of this eclipse. So yeah, I think traffic is, was really going to be an issue for us. Unfortunately, I, I don't think we're going to see the lodging, being overwhelmed and lodgers and that kind of thing. We are going to host a couple of special groups during that time period. It's going to be a very, very, very busy time for us because we've got the St. Louis Day, we've got our visitors from France, and we've got general, Greater San Antonio is bringing a, I think it's like a hundred, a hundred and fifty.
Site selectors.
Yeah, site selectors, developers that are looking at this region. Well, they're going to be, we're going to be hosting them in, for the eclipse. So we'll be doing that at our airport. So anyway, we, lots going on in, in that regard, but I was really happy to see the turnout that we had at Regional Park. Was there any questions related to the, what you see there? I also want to mention Halloween. Helen's not here to, to tell us, but we need trunks for Halloween.
Yeah, the Boo Bash next Saturday?
Yeah.
No, this Saturday. This Saturday.
Yeah.
For, yeah, because I'm working the pumpkin toss.
Awesome. So Boo Bash this Saturday, we're looking for sign-ups, bring a trunk, bring candy, that sort of thing. Questions?
Yes.
When do you anticipate having the Algiers Drainage Workshop?
I don't know, I don't have a time scheduled. We have limited, you know, options unless we call a special meeting, right? We know we have a November meeting and a December meeting. So the real question is, are we going to try and have that during a regular meeting, which I think we could? This is not the scale of a full workshop. It's really just a discussion on, on that. But there may be some benefit of having, rather than trying to hold a council meeting, we could have a neighborhood meeting, right? It's too bad our, our community center isn't built at Regional Park, because that'd be the perfect place to host that, right? But it might make sense for us to have, rather than have, having a public meeting that's directed at that group. Because this is really the study for the Algiers, Athens area. But I don't have the time for it.
How soon could they be ready for that?
I don't know.
Okay.
There's both, they, I think they're, you know, according to the, I read the same thing you did in the, in the staff reports. They're wrapping up their study. I know they, they've collected a lot of data, I've seen them out there doing it. I just don't know how close they are to being able to present to us. And, you know, as you know, I would like to see a proposed report that we then review, and a proposed presentation that we then review and give them feedback, and I don't have any of that.
Can you find out from when they anticipate to be ready? And then we'll assume that it's going to be.
Yeah, I don't know if they're a week away or eight weeks away, right? But I think they're pretty close.
I, I think it would be a mistake to have a public meeting before the city council has been thoroughly briefed and we understand what's in the report.
Okay.
I think there could be too many misunderstandings that would come out.
I think my preference honestly would be, especially for, for yourself being in that district and myself as well as, as mayor, I think that it would be good for us to individually work to understand what that looks like. Because I think that we understand like the localized issues with that. So maybe we just do that so that we save like a double meeting and we'll just work it through. You've been really thorough with that stuff anyways, so. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Are you guys all right with that?
I want to make sure we understand that we're, we're briefed.
Yeah.
We'll touch a little bit on it on Monday. I keep saying that, but drainage is one of those areas that we, we've got some projects we need to do. Our original investments that were made twenty years ago need to be reinvested in, or we're going to lose them, and that's a real problem, so.
Okay. Tina?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. On the online permitting, will it state, you know, bold letter or something that you cannot start work until you have an approved permit in hand?
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's already pretty well stated in the paperwork they fill out. It gives them very clear instructions on when they can and can't do it. And I know one of our issues, you brought this up at our last meeting, was we got people who are, who have a permit, but they're not posting it like they're supposed to. And that's, that's an issue that we need to be able to follow up on, so.
And how we, how, is it going to be able for, like, a lot of that, attaching the drawings or schematics that a lot of people have to submit for what they're working on?
Are they able to submit those electronically? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, attach it to the online permit.
I believe so, but I honestly don't know enough about it. I haven't gone through like a primer on how this thing works. But we, yeah, we have methods for people to send us that information already.
I'm just going through because normally you want to attach your schematics or drawings or whatever.
We use Bureau Veritas for our review process, and Bureau Veritas has a, they're a much, much larger company, and they have a a cloud-based repository where you can upload your plans for them to review.
Okay.
So I, I'm fairly confident that already exists, we already kind of had that. So yeah.
And then once the permit is approved or disapproved, how's the notification? Are we calling them to let them know their permit's ready for pickup? How are we notifying them, or is it through email?
I don't know. I would, I would imagine email, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, because people are going to ask me questions and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I need to look at the system. Typically, when you're doing it online, you get a, a, a notice right away, this has been received, that sort of thing, so.
Okay. Then under streets improvements, they did do the fog seal on Geneva. But I told Devin that there's still the rock that they dumped on Dr. Best's property that they haven't cleaned up yet.
Okay. Yeah, I, they have a punch list that they have not worked all the way through.
Okay, okay. And then on the code enforcement summaries, that statement is still in there. That says council representative is looking to, into civil suit against them. We, yeah, that, that statement, and this is the third time I've requested it to be corrected.
Okay.
That the city, the city council representative.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
I don't, in, in their defense, I don't think I've relayed that obviously, so.
All right, anything else? Councilor Norris?
Two things. First of all, in the library report, it actually shows that just like about fifty people have closed their accounts at the library. It'd be nice if that trend continues, if we could get an explanation of why Angela thinks that is. And also in Mr. Hamm's report, he said, and I quote, that he is working on a Highway ninety project to increase traffic in the area. From increasing the traffic.
Increase tourism.
Oh, it doesn't say.
Yeah. I got you. Yeah, that, that is in that, down below, it's, there's some little graphics, he's got pounds in the town. And one of them shows experience, the stretch, historic Highway ninety. He's working with other communities along ninety to promote kind of the old Route sixty-six kind of vibe and feel that want to entice people to, that want a day trip, to day trip to Castroville, do that kind of thing. But you're right, probably poor choice of words. We're not trying to increase traffic.
All right, other questions? So a question for you on the per-
Can I ask for clarification on the library report? Where did you find that, because you mentioned that earlier, and I was trying to, I was looking through the report trying to find where.
Sure, so there's a page, member statistics, active accounts.
Is that page three of her report?
Uh, page two. Um, it says that there were, it, so it says there were seventeen oh eight active accounts in August.
Yeah.
That's actually not correct. If you add up the numbers above it, that's eighteen oh eight. And then in September, there were seventeen fifty active accounts. And those numbers in September add up to each other correctly, so.
Okay.
There've been about fifty accounts closed with the library, which is odd.
So it should be eighteen oh eight, not seventeen oh eight?
And it's just be interesting in the Michigan studies.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
On the permit thing, did you have anything else on that, Scott?
Nope.
Okay. On the permit thing, are we looking to increase that to things like burn permits, animal registrations, that kind of stuff on the permit section?
I would like to extend it to every, I mean, it's like what I stated earlier. I don't know what, whether this, this particular permit solution can be broadened to include all kinds of burns, I don't know. But regardless, our effort is to, yes, to, anything that someone would want to contact the city and seek permission to, to the extent applicable and, and able, we would like to make those interactions virtual as much as possible. Be able to go online and do it, be able to pay online and do it, and not have to come to.
Are we working on that roadmap to see what that looks like? To see what all is available and when we might implement each one based on the amount of work is required?
Uh, no. Yes and no. I mean, I, we're, it's like setting up the pins in a, in a bowling alley. I'm setting them up and knocking them down as much as I can, but I don't have.
Is that on your list?
I don't have a comprehensive plan.
Was that on your vacation list? I'm going to call it your vacation. So if, if you don't know, Scott worked on his list of all of the stuff that we have, and it's a lot, but he did it on his vacation, shame on you.
Well, it's mainly, I was trying to relax, and I couldn't relax. So I got, I really, on day two, I got it out of my head and I was fine.
That's good.
But, um, yeah, I lost money. I was, it's true.
Wow.
Gamble, the casino's not kind to me. So, um, yes, I, there, there are, I, I don't have a comprehensive list of all the things, all those interactions. But one of the things we are doing is working closely with, you know, with the advent of AI and ChatGPT, there's a lot of things that can be resolved on your website to make it more user-friendly. So we have a, I have a call coming up with our website provider. They've, they have all kind, they've been buying businesses left and right over the last two years. So their level of support to us is, we're not making full use of that. So I want to see what we can do with our website first, because I believe that there's some things that wouldn't cost us any money that we just need to implement.
Okay.
Looking into that, but that's going to, see this week or next week.
All right. Sounds good. All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, next item is executive session pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, Section five five one dot zero seven one entitled Consultation with Attorney, and Texas Government Code, Section five five one dot zero eight six entitled Competitive Utility Matters. The city council, as the governing body of a public power utility and public gas utility, will meet in closed session to discuss competitive matters, including the CPS separation agreement and the CPS gas contract renewal and related activities. We're going into executive session at seven twelve.
I was there for the barbecue cook-off, that happened the other day.
I was there. My daughter's birthday party. And had a trailer parked in our reserved spot.
Nice, all right.
You got that result?
I didn't mention the Waste Management Report? What'd you think of the Waste Management Report? The Waste Management Report, what'd you think of that?
Uh, I honestly just haven't.
It's in the, it's in the staff reports, I really like it. It shows the tonnage by month, it shows how many missed collections they had by month. We only have three months of data, but I really like that report.
Okay, cool, I'll take a look at it. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, they said Tuesday night is supposed to get down to the forties.
Well, see, you know, the hornets when they did that, it's been forty.
Oh, yeah.
It was nice to stay like this.
Do I want to keep it there?
No.
But I want the humidity to go out.
I'm looking forward to fireplace weather.
Very true, very true. Hot chocolate.
Yes.
Hot toddy.
We have never put a fire in a fireplace yet.
Really?
This year I actually built an insert.
Make sure you get it cleaned up.
Yes.
Mine, we don't build it very often. I have a lot of losers that live in it and the bodies come out. It's a huge fireplace.
We had bats that came through on occasion. They didn't have a screen up on the top.
I built the insert because we were getting like three hornets a day coming down the fireplace and then drifting around the house.
We had this squirrel and he'd have this little, you know, like, I'll take care of it when I get home and I'll create it. So he's working the night shift and I call and say, squirrel's so quiet. He's like, how do I just go to sleep? He has a whole tire stuck. He had a heart attack probably.
Very quiet squirrel.
Yeah, removal very easy.
All right, tell me when you're ready.
All right, we're going to return from executive session at 7:44. And there is no action out of executive session. Any further discussion of future agenda items?
I still don't have access to that list.
Okay.
I can read it.
You can read it, but you don't have.
I don't have right access.
I was able to write to it today.
Let's schedule some time in. I can help you out with it.
So I have a question. Next month, I won't be able to attend the meeting because I am having surgery the day before on my spine. But there's an item that according to the newspaper is going to have an open hearing regarding Josh Kemp stuff. Are we voting that same night?
No.
Okay. Because I want to be present.
There was being voted for a while because it's got to go to Pinesy.
But you'll see it first.
What's that?
It goes to it on the page.
No, so what's going to happen is it's going to go in front of Pinesy and then it's going to come here for the public hearing. And I wanted to make sure that we're not doing knee jerk reactions. And I wanted people to get a chance to absorb it and to discuss it with other people and to really come to a slow and non-emotional logical decision. So I wanted to give it a little bit of time.
Okay, so voting will be in December?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Great, we're through the agenda and adjourned at 7:45.